Good evening. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome to the January 7th, 2025 Clayton City Council meeting. And the meeting is now called to order, and we'll do roll call.
Thank you, member. Mayor, Councilmember Aneah?
Here.
Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Here.
Mayor Trupiano?
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Sorry, next, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And we will now move on to item number three, which is public comment on non-agenda items. And I have two cards here. Mr. Miller, would you like to go to the podium? You have three minutes. Just turn your, turn the button on. No? There you go.
That does it.
There you go.
Yeah, cool. My name's Glenn Miller. I live up at Peacock Creek. I have provided you some visual aids as part of my comments. I don't know if the, yeah, could you please give them to her?
Since there aren't enough for me to distribute to all five, I need to distribute to them after so that they're able to get copies. We don't have sufficient copies for them in the public.
They could just pass them across each other, and I do have another copy if you'd like.
Counsel?
If not, if not, I will, I will then, can I have those copies?
Absolutely.
So I will then use the captions that I put on there to describe.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about a deteriorating condition up there. Everybody's familiar with Peacock Creek and the benches that we have. And I'm glad people come and enjoy the sunsets, but you know what? They don't just enjoy the sunsets, they disrespect my neighborhood. The first, first thing I'll have is a, is a cylinder which is used for drugs. This is a hardy meal debris. This is basically thrown, and the interesting part about it is the bottles and cans that they drink are literally thrown down the hill, which makes them harder to pick up. This is, this is more trash from a different morning. Mind you, this, these pictures have all been taken from the Friday morning before Christmas to the Saturday after New Year's. So just a short period of time. Here's some more trash. Here's what happens when they drink too much. We have to, we have to look at that in the morning. I did, do notice that for about four months, here's your street light, which is right there. It's out. Some more, this is what goes on when they drink too much. And then I just thought I'd give you a kind of an accumulation. These are a couple of pictures. One, both of them are from my neighbor. He picked up all this in one morning, all this in the second morning. Included in that are pipes, glass, lighters. I've picked up a couple of lighters, 20 to 30 cigarette butts. And just every few days. The last picture I have here is, I just thought it was quite ironic. This is just recently, here's some cigarette butts right in front of the no smoking sign. And then, of course, another one, apparently somebody least came provided with their bag, but kind of missed and decided to discard it. It's disgusting. I have, on several occasions, called in at night on other, oh, and I've witnessed-
And your time is up.
Okay.
So-
So these are our conditions.
Yeah.
I want to know what you guys are going to do about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And certainly the street light, we'll take a look at that. And Councilmember Diaz will turn off his phone.
Is there a garbage can there?
I don't know if there's a garbage can up there, but that's something that we can look into. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Well, the problem with the garbage can is somebody has to pick it, has to clean it up.
Correct.
You have to rely on the citizens to actually stick the garbage in the garbage cans.
Correct. Thank you. Next speaker card I have is Lauren Kendorf, Ms. Kendorf. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, staff and city council members. I got a hold of the agenda, and I'm seeing that there is still no further discussion about staffing, and I do have questions about that. It sounds like our police force has made the change, and we'll be hiring a new chief. And it sounds like the new, the current one is, the one interim is wonderful, from what I've heard. I've heard Councilmember Aneah talk about being one person short, but, you know, hopefully that can be dealt with if that is the case. Maintenance, same staff but overworked. What I'm worried about is the third floor staff that I can only imagine is working their little tushies off because, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is we have city manager, assistant city manager, city clerk, and the accountant that's been here many years. But when that new org chart was developed with the most recent interim city manager, you know, there were some higher skilled positions, there were some combining of jobs, there was some training, you know, some training to step up for people that are less experienced. So that was all good. I understand we have a contracted community for development director, and I don't know if that's one of those agency people that, you know, costs more. But I've been at two meetings. There's been two that I've seen proposals for the staff to hire someone. It seems that compensation is an issue. But I would just like to know from the council where we stand with staff and what's being done. So, because I just hate to see people being overworked. We've had so many staffing issues in this last few years. And I really want to make sure they get the help and support that, that they believe. So we need a full staff in place. We need to not burn our people out, and we need to hear about what's happening, you know. I really appreciated the updates from our previous regular city manager about what was going on. Those were very helpful, that went out to the city. Some things go out on social media sometimes, but if you're not, you know, that's, it really needs to come out to the whole city. So I'm just hoping we can, like I said, get these people support in what they need to really do. I mean, they're doing an excellent job that I know of, but I want to make sure they're well-staffed.
Thank you, Ms. Kendorf. And just so everyone knows, the discussion about additional staffing will be coming back to the Budget and Audit Committee meeting on Monday at 4:00, right here in this room. So join us at that time. I have one more speaker card here from Meredith Yalenti. Meredith, please come to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Meredith Yalenti, and I live at, on Roundhouse Place, up at the end. I had two main things I wanted to talk about today. The first is our democratic institutions. I think it's vital that we maintain the hybrid format of our meetings. So please stay online. I'm a busy mom. I have, the only way I have to participate in meetings sometimes is by listening online and making calls in. Please don't make it-
This is actually a scheduled item, and you will have opportunity to speak at that time.
All right, excellent. Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to talk about is the light post is out on Roundhouse Place, and I'm hoping it will get replaced. I'm assuming Rich knows about this.
I do.
Excellent.
And they're working on replacing it.
Beautiful. Thank you so much. That is all.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker card I have is Scott Denslow. Mr. Denslow, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for your time, guys. Just wanted to say, I think he left, but I agree with Glenn Miller, my neighbor. It doesn't happen often, but the cigarette butts and all that stuff is disgusting. I don't know what needs to be done about it, but we are in complete agreement with that. But on to my prepared statement. Just wanted to say that I'm happy to be here tonight. It was extraordinarily difficult to get here in person, but it is a slower time of year for me, and I'm grateful that I'm able to make it. Most weeks I'm not, and I really do appreciate having other opportunities. It gives me an opportunity, and trust me, Stephanie, I'm not going to speak on agenda item. Just gives me an opportunity to listen to my local politicians and neighbors, and I really do appreciate that. Like I said, I appreciate having the opportunity to speak in person tonight, and I appreciate, when necessary, to appreciate or to participate virtually in a representative democracy. By definition, the voices of as many-
Mr. Denslow? I am so sorry. I do need to ask you to redirect to non-agendized items, or you can come back and speak to that item when we go over to item six.
Of course. Yeah, we can do that. I was planning on speaking on that anyway. So like I said, I just appreciate the opportunity to speak here in person tonight. It means a lot to me, as I typically am not able to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denslow. And is there anybody else in the room who wishes to address non-agenda item? Anyone online?
There are no speakers for this item.
No speakers, okay. This time, I'm going to close public comment, and we are going to move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Mr. Denslow, for turning that off. Consent calendar. Anybody have any comments, questions on the consent calendar? It's our minutes from the last meeting.
Move approval.
Public comment.
Yeah, public comment.
Public comment. Okay. Close public comment. Nobody online?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Hi.
Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Thank you, you have five eyes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number five, which is recognitions and presentations. There are none this evening, and so we will move on to action, our first of three action items, action item number six, A, which is consider and decide whether to continue use of hybrid meetings for city council, planning commission, and budget and audit committee meetings. And I believe our city manager is going to kick us off on this one first.
Thank you, Mayor, member of council. The item tonight is to consider and decide whether to continue the use of hybrid meetings for city council, planning, and budget and audit committee meetings. This was revisited back in November of 2023 and extended. As many of you are aware, the impetus for starting hybrid meetings was during the pandemic and distancing and social distancing, excuse me. And so to keep people safe, we are allowing people to attend and participate in meetings from their homes, and that practice has continued on since then. This item is to discuss if the, what the council's pleasure is, is to either continue that practice or do something different at this time. So there is no true fiscal impact. There are a variety of ways, there, different cities have accomplished this in different ways, continuing. Some have done away with hybrid meetings and have gone to just a streaming platform, which would allow people to attend in person, to provide comment, and to also continue to email directly to the city clerk for their public record to be, or their public comment to be put into record. If they do it before 5:00 on the meeting day, that will be given to the council that night and be part of the record. If it's after 5:00, it'll be sent after the meeting to councils. They won't have it that evening. With that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for discussion.
Thank you, city manager, Chris. And what questions do we have? Any questions regarding this item?
Just to clarify?
Yeah.
This is, we're discussing the public comment during, remote public comment, but not the actual streaming of the meetings themselves. Is that correct?
So my recommendation, and I've spoken with the city attorney, that in this situation, we would continue to stream if council chose not to do public comment via the hybrid method. We would still stream on a platform. We don't know what platform. It could be YouTube, it could be Facebook Live. There's a variety of different options that you could use. The Zoom option would then be available for consultants who are not in the area, but that would not be an advertised Zoom link for the general public. It would just be for those that need to attend our meetings to present or participate.
Thank you.
And it sounds like we're going back to kind of what we did before the pandemic, correct? That was, we were streaming?
Yes, I believe you were streaming before the pandemic, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Nope.
So the streaming, they would see the next day or that night?
No, the streaming would be live that, that evening. There's typically about a 10-second lag because of, but it would be that evening.
Thank you.
So there would be live streaming, and then the video would be saved and archived like it currently is, like we always did in the past, right?
That is correct.
The, what about, well, you said there were no, the cost savings piece. I'm trying to figure out, what is the point of doing this? If it's not broken, why are we trying to fix it? So does anybody want to help answer that question?
I think basically what we're looking at is we're looking at efficiency and kind of streamlining the meeting. So we're kind of, our thought is to go back to where we were before the pandemic, where people can write to us if they've got comments for us, and be as verbose as they want, or come in person and have their three minutes. And to keep an efficient meeting.
I'm not, I'm not following the efficiency piece. So as we're having discussions, for example, and it's happened quite a few times where people, it might spark something for someone. I know that our priorities, we actually had goal settings last year and had priorities that we set, and accessibility was one. And so I think by limiting accessibility and having people be able to communicate with us in the moment is hindering that. And so since our goals are to be accessible and have the public be accessible to us in a variety of ways, I'm just not following why we would limit the accessibility to the public.
Okay. Anybody else have any?
I know that several of our surrounding communities have already, and city councils have already moved strictly to streaming and allowing public comment in person. Concord, for example, Pleasant Hill, and Walnut Creek had a rash of really unusual and disappointing commentators that came online, and it was not well-received. So I think this is, we're moving in the right direction and joining others. And by the way, this was set up, as has been mentioned, this was set up because of the COVID problem, the pandemic, when we wanted to keep people distanced. That's been over for some time, and so it's time to move back to a more normal way of conducting business. Thank you.
All righty. Anything else before I open it up for public comment? All right, we'll go to our first speaker card, which is Mr. Hayden.
Thank you. I do want to address this issue and encourage the council to continue the hybrid version of this. I think the council and previous councils certainly have even commented on that. The hybrid has resulted in much more involvement from our community. It allowed people to participate, and with people now going back to work, it allowed people that weren't available to come to meetings to join in and actually have their comments considered by the council before decisions are made. And I think that's very helpful. I think it's in the council's best interest to maintain this open dialogue with the community. And this certainly encourages that, and I'm afraid just streaming doesn't allow those comments to come in and for the community to hear also those concerns as well as the council. So I think that's been a real plus and would like to see that continued for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. The next speaker card is Lauren Kendorf, Ms. Kendorf.
The advancement in technology and the spread of user knowledge for navigating the use of hybrid meetings has become a tremendous asset for engagement and involvement in so many areas of our society. Now that we have access to this ability to use this avenue of communication, I can't begin to imagine why anyone would limit its use, even if the city doesn't have to legally have a legal obligation to offer this option. Hybrid access to meetings benefits so many residents, some signing in regularly, others for just agenda items of interest. There are families with children and people who have worked all day who need to navigate routines, tuck in your child, read a story, but you can listen to the meeting before and after. There are residents whose professions takes them out of town, and they listen from their hotel room or wherever they are because they want to stay involved. They can make comment from afar. There are people with accessibility issues for whom it is difficult to get here. I have many older friends for whom evening outings are difficult, especially those that go later into the evening. And how can we exclude them now that we have this technology to make them included? There's so many people. As for budget and audit committee, that's a meeting during daytime hours, which people may be at work, be able to take that time to listen, but not be physically present in Clayton. So the city is fully prepared with the equipment, the staff, and to offer hybrid meetings. Tonight, we have a wonderful technician in back who's keeping this up and running. He's excellent. Our wonderful city clerk, who attends every meeting as parliamentarian and is part of her job, is very skilled at connecting callers with very professional and always very positive. So the cost of hybrid meetings is already included in the city budget, and to think the council would choose to limit citizen access to public meetings as merely, as merely a cost savings would be extremely distressing. There are many, many specifics under the overall umbrella of hybrid meetings that are up to discussion tonight. I'm asking the council consider the details and repercussions carefully and ensure this information is shared with residents before they make that decision. I think a lot of people don't realize what's going on, and people aren't realizing they're going to be excluded after, when we have everything in place to include rather than exclude. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kendorf. Thank you. Next speaker card belongs to Mr. Ed Miller.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you. I'm Ed Miller. I live at 590 Mount Dell Drive in Dana Ridge. The concept of elected representatives listening to and being responsive to their constituents is core, it's fundamental to the American political process. Similarly, citizens deserve transparency. I'm concerned because all of the proposed changes to the council meetings being proposed tonight either silence the input of citizens or conceal information from them. As a busy father, sometimes I'm unable to be here in person, but I would like to comment on agenda items of importance that affect me. I strongly urge the council to retain the hybrid meeting format or, you know, possibly risk appearing uninterested in public feedback. Similarly, I won't talk specifically about the other changes coming in items 6B and 6C other than to say that they appear to be designed to silence other council members or conceal that some council members don't accept any committee assignments other than attending the two council meetings here each month. And so based on this, I strongly urge the council to leave the council meetings in the current format, and additionally, as a matter of transparency, include at least audit recordings, I'm sorry, audio recordings of the budget and planning commission meetings up on the website. I appreciate this opportunity to speak, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next up, Meredith, one more time, Ms. Yalenti.
Hello again. I hope, Ms. Mayor, I'm not reading too much into your wording. When, it made me really nervous when you said, so we're going back to before the pandemic times. I'm hoping this isn't pre-decided and predetermined that we're ending the public comment via remote. I think eliminating the public participation from afar in the city council meetings would really exclude a lot of people. I'm a busy mom. If I want to participate in a meeting in person, I have to not tuck in my girl to bedtime. I have to miss out on my family dinner. Sometimes I'm, you know, coming back from a gymnastics lesson, or if it's a hybrid meeting, I can pull over the car, call in at the appropriate time, and return to my life. If that is eliminated, I no longer get to participate. I know that efficiency is important, but I don't think it's important enough to happen at the price of excluding people. I, I think democracy is very important. Warts and all, we need, even though it's, it might be a little bit less efficient to include everybody's voice, I think it's more important that everybody have a say and be And there's no fiscal impact. I think that's important. Please don't exclude me from participating. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last speaker card I have is Teri Denslow. Ms. Denslow?
I'll just be brief. So when the council was asking for clarifying questions regarding what's the driving force behind this, I heard the pandemic's over, and therefore it's time to go back. Professionally, I work for a company that has 40,000 employees. Prior to the pandemic, we would travel all over the world to go to meetings, and attendance to those meetings would be limited. During the pandemic, we started using Teams and Zoom. We've never gone back because the benefit of being able to have people from all over the world, not get on a plane, not spend company money, to have more inclusion has been well-understood. So it's very difficult for me to understand what the driving force would be to take a step backward in going back when a council priority is around transparency. In addition to what I'm talking about professionally here, I'm also involved in a number of different nonprofits. I can do that and have my full-time job because half of our meetings are on Zoom. Meredith is one of the people who attends our meetings, and there's plenty of time where Meredith has gone off camera and said, got to kiss the daughter, let her go to bed, and then comes right back on, and we get business done. I don't understand why we would take a step back when our priority is around transparency and engagement, when we have come to recognize what lots of tech companies have come to recognize, which is having an option for, at a minimum, a hybrid brings more value, more engagement with the workplace, more engagement in the community. So at a minimum, I'd love to hear something other than we want to take a step back to where we've been before.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to address this? Oh, did I have another one? Scott, I'm sorry, Mr. Denslow, I didn't see that. Snuck it in.
That's okay, Kim. I appreciate it.
I appreciate it. Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Scott Denslow, and I run a fairly successful business in Clayton. As a business owner, it's extraordinarily hard for me to serve my clients in a timely manner while also choosing to participate in our local government process. While I can make it here occasionally, I usually cannot. The virtual participation via Zoom allows me to have my voice heard and to listen to those of council members and my fellow citizens. Without this option, and likely many others, or I and likely many others, would be negatively affected by not having an opportunity to have our voices heard and to listen to the discussion amongst council members and our neighbors. Interestingly, I'm now hearing that advisors, council members, and others are going to have access to this feature, but not the citizens of Clayton. That doesn't seem like the right thing. So I'm just learning that tonight. That's a new one. That just seems kind of wrong to me, but just my two cents. I didn't have every time to check every locality in the Bay Area today, but almost every locality I did check did offer some sort of virtual option. Now, I do, you know, understand there's different caveats, and we can work around that. But what we're really talking about here is participation. What I've heard from so many council members over time is that you guys want participation from the citizens that you serve. This offers that. Taking it away takes it away from many. We've already heard from Meredith, my wife, myself, and so, you know, I'm sure there's so many others that are affected by this. I was going to come up here and name names of the three of you guys that are trying to do this. I don't need to do that. I think what Teri said about Chevron is much more impactful, honestly. Why can't we just learn from what they've learned? I think Clayton can do that. But yeah, I'm not going to call you guys out. I just, I do question why anybody, anybody here would want to go back and really would want to thwart the democratic process. I mean, what we're really talking about is disenfranchising the voices of people like Meredith because she has to kiss Charlie. Really? People like me because I promised same-day reports to my clients. People like Teri because she's rushing home from Richmond in the rain just to get here because she cares so much. Why? Why on earth would we do that? Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Denslow. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online?
Yes. Rachel Levy, your microphone is available. We have currently two members wishing to speak to this item. If you do intend to speak to this item, please raise your hand now, and we will take you in order that you appear. Rachel, you can start.
Hi there, this is Rachel Levy. Hello? So I've opted the option to participate in city council meetings while home with my kids. For example, my son left for school at 7:30 this morning, and after school, he went straight to wrestling practice. He just walked in the door, and I got to give him a hug. If I had to attend the meetings in person, I wouldn't get to see him at all till he goes to bed. Also, my husband's a pilot. He couldn't speak because he's working right now, but he does enjoy the option to participate in city council meetings from his hotel room. This is a really simple way to be inclusive to a lot of people. There are a lot of moms like me. There are people who are sick, and it's just so easy. I don't understand why we would discontinue this. So our family would like to ask that you do not discontinue the hybrid meeting option. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levy.
Spots, your microphone is available?
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is Karen Amos. I'm at 364 Mount Washington Way in Dana Hills. I just got home. I've been listening to this call on Zoom the entire way for my 40-minute drive, which is like, usually it's an hour. And I just want to urge the council to seriously reconsider, because it sounds like you've already made up your minds, to please reconsider changing the access for citizens to participate in the city council meetings. The hybrid access is a valuable way to keep citizens engaged, citizens like me who are driving and others. And I feel like I can stay much more connected, since I don't usually get home before 7:00. I can stay much more connected to what's going on with the city council meetings when I have that option. And I don't always speak. Sometimes I just call into the meeting just to hear what's going on, just from my living room, if I've gotten home, or even during my drive. I've done that multiple times. So I strongly urge you to consider maintaining this valuable tool to keep the citizens of Clayton engaged. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, anybody else?
Yes, we currently have three other speakers wanting to speak. Scott Collier, your microphone is available?
Great, thank you. My name is Scott Collier. I live up on the Golden Eagle Way up in Keller Ridge. And as a citizen of Clayton for many years, I urge you to continue the meetings. Not only for me, I am caring a pair of disability and accessibility issue is real for me. But not only that, I work for a state government agency in San Francisco, much like your planning commission. And we also use Zoom, just like you do. And we have no intention of removing that because the level of public engagement is so much higher, so much better for everyone. So like so many that have spoken before me, I urge you do not give rid of hybrid meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rosie Straka, your microphone is available?
Good evening. Rosie Straka here, Peacock Creek. I just wanted to pop in and say that I too agree that the hybrid Zoom option should not be terminated. We really need that. We need the transparency of having that. And as I'm looking at you guys, it looks like the four of you have already made up your mind, and you're going to, again, not listen to what the public wants and what you want to do. I urge you, keep us in the loop. Do not get rid of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Straka. Madam Clerk, one more person?
Yes. Roy Correa, your microphone is available?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Okay, I'll be real quick. I came in late, and I heard a last comment from somebody on the councils that, and I didn't get to all three, but they said, we want to get back to normal. Back to what? What normal? Are you talking pre-pandemic? I said, I think you were saying. And when we have this technology that can be used and exploited, the technology helps keep people like the council and others on the straight and narrow. There's a lot of people who are going to be just removed altogether due to not, you know, all the issues I think that presented accessibility, some people are compromised, lack of communicative engagement is going to be going out. Transparency, physical travel, all those are issues that people in the community have. And I think I heard somewhere, someplace, that 85% of the town voted, unlike, a great number voted, unlike some of the other neighboring towns. And you think about that. How did that, you know, what are the considerations that enable that? You know, I would think one consideration definitely be engagement, communication, information. So the other thing, the technology will keep the council, the mayor, on the straight and narrow. You need feedback. You know, you're going to remove people. So it's like silly to not exploit technology, and I don't understand the basis, the rationale. Nobody has given a clean, you know, basis rationale for it. You're going to disengage people, and there are going to be trade-offs, you know, lower voting. I might, I don't know if you go lower voting, but just the fact that lack of engagement. And really, I think with having the technology, this town has been, is being cleaned up. There are so many issues with it, and with feedback. You need feedback. Otherwise, you're going to do the same old stuff. It's like, exploit technology. That's why we have it. Be work smart.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
There are none.
Okay. So let's bring it back to council. Oh, cool, go ahead. Of course.
This is actually my first time doing this. Hello, everyone. My name is Jordan Tillman. I look just like my mom. I'm a senior at the University of Arizona studying political science and law. I can't always be here, and like I just said, I've never spoken at one of these. I don't even do it online. One of my favorite classes I just took this semester was on law and morality. And one of the concepts that we learned was if you don't allow a speaker to speak on your public campus, you take that speaker's ability to convey their ideas and beliefs, and you also take away the listener's ability to learn what they could have learned from that speaker speaking. Now, that's the speaker and the listener aspect, but then you also take away the community aspect. Let's say I had no intention of going to that speech. I may not have any intention of, I didn't have any intention of speaking tonight, but the option and the opportunity to do so, just like if it was online, because if I remember correctly, you're not taking away streaming. So I can still listen to it, but you're taking away the option to have public comment. So if I'm online, listening to it, I wouldn't be able to raise my hand or unmute and say what I needed to say. So that option to be able to do so is being limited. I've worked in federal and local law enforcement for the last two years. Very busy. I'm a student, do that, have internships, clubs. So my life is very busy, but having the opportunity to be able to do something, I think is very important to democracy, but also just our way of life. I've got a minute and a half, so I'm going to take it. As a kid, you know, you're like, oh, why didn't I get invited to that party? You may be in bed in your PJs, watching Netflix, eating popcorn, and have no intention of going to the party, but you wanted the opportunity to be asked and say no. It's the opportunity to have an option, to have a voice in what you do, that I think is very important. Now, you guys will decide how you guys decide, but I just wanted to voice that as a 20-year-old college student studying political science and law. That's what I've gained from my education, and I think that could be helpful to what you guys are doing up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Is there anybody else in the room or online that wants to address this item?
There are no speakers online.
Okay, thank you. So let's just bring it back to the council.
Were you going to read my comment?
I would not read it into cover. I would give it to them after. Yes. Correct. You already had your opportunity to speak. Each speaker is granted one opportunity.
I got through cancer, and the only way I was able to participate in the meetings before was remotely. Please don't exclude people with medical reasons.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for sharing that. And again, the accessibility factor, you will still be able to watch the meeting live from home. You will still be able to write to us, email us, and come and speak in person. I don't know, does anybody have anything else they want to add?
First of all, the, just to remind everybody, the agenda is published 72 hours before the meeting. So we usually get it on Friday afternoon, so you have plenty of time to review it. And as has been stated, you can write a comment, you can email us, because our numbers are, and our email address are published. So you're going to be able to still have access to the, we're not cutting off the access, or not proposing to cut off the access. You're still going to be able to get streaming and hear it. And by the way, you know, you mentioned somebody about coming home from work to get there in time. I looked around the area. Danville starts their meetings at 5:00 in the afternoon, so it's difficult for people working who normally get off in the 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. We start our meetings at 7:00. So you still have plenty of time to come out and come out to Hoyer Hall here and hear it in person. But it's not being made to, or not being suggested to eliminate access to information. You're getting access. You get the agenda published 72 hours before. You can read it, you can listen to it, you can comment back either in writing, which gets into the public record, or you can email us. So it's not, we're not trying to eliminate your voice on any of this, any of the actions that the city council is considering. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Diaz. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to clarify, at least say what I heard from everyone wasn't that, they don't think that we're trying to limit their access to us and letting us know their thoughts. We're limiting their accessibility to be able to speak to us during the meeting. That's what they all have an issue with. We heard it from everyone who dialed in. I know that this is the second time that Mr. Correa, Korea, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name, called in. He did it in November of 2023 when he asked us, when this was on the agenda, please don't limit the access. And I think that all of them gave all the reasons why we shouldn't. You have people who are disabled and cannot get here for a variety of reasons. People who are working, people who actually want to interact during the meeting, and it takes place. So sending in public comment, are we going to read out their public comments aloud during the meetings? Is that what we're proposing? I don't think so. It's just going to be entered into the record. So there is no verbalization on what folks are thinking and how they're feeling, so their voices are literally not being heard. And I think that we really should listen to what the wants of the community are. There is no, there's no cost savings. It's not more efficient. Our job is to, is to literally come here, make policy, and hear from the residents and the citizens. Why are we trying to hurry up and get home? Because to me, that's the only thing that's efficient, is ending the meeting earlier. I don't know why we would limit it when it's not broken. That's what I'm, if you can help me understand why, like, what is the issue on why we're trying to get rid of it? And maybe I might go along with it, but I do think, given that we have accessibility as one of our goals, I'm not understanding why we're trying to get rid of it and end Zoom. I know we're going to still stream. I know it's still going to be put on the recordings, and I would say that that's good because there were two budget and audit committee meetings in May of '24 that were not recorded. That was problematic in trying to, in trying to do all the budget issues. So I want to make sure that, however you guys decide you're going to vote today, because I think it's clear that I'm going to be a no if this goes forward, that there's nothing lost in transparency for our residents. So that all of the planning commission, budget and audit committee meetings, any other Brown Act meetings that need to be recorded are or streamed. I didn't even know that we were streaming or going to stream. In fact, I actually want to hear a little bit more about how that's going to work. All of these meetings. I would like to hear a little bit more about that. But that's what everyone is saying. Their voices will not be heard, and it's accessibility and being able to voice in the moment if they hear something in the meeting and being able to call in versus having to get here when they can.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. We're on the discussion portion, right?
Yes, we are.
I really appreciate the comments around the ease of accessibility. I think that is important, and obviously democracy is important. So I think that's, it's a little hyperbolic to say that this is, you know, democracy's at risk or something like that. But what it, what it appears to me is that there's a confusion around what the fundamental purposes of our meetings are. It's not like, there's no corporate analog to this. In the corporate space, the rules around how interaction happens is very different. In this setting, the purpose of our meeting is not a dialogue with the public. We're not allowed to have a dialogue with the public. The purpose of our meeting is to do the people's business here among ourselves and have discussion. The meetings are public so that it is transparent, so that people could witness it, and they can offer comment if they want, and, you know, as we do at the podium. But for the, what the meetings are meant to do is for us to conduct our business and discuss among ourselves. The comments are appreciated, and input is great, but to the extent that there, there is things that folks would like to share, always, of course, in the meetings in person, I think is great. And the way that it works, when you submit something in writing ahead of time, the city clerk or whoever is performing that role forwards those comments to all the council members prior to the meeting. We all read it, well, I won't speak for anyone else. I read it prior to all the meetings so that any input that folks have is contemplated when we are doing our deliberations. So, you know, the, the idea that we have folks, you know, thinking that they are participating remotely is laudable, however, it is not actually a dialogue where we can listen to you, but we can't really address what you're saying anyways. And so, in the And so in the interest of efficiency of the meetings, you know, the intent is, well, my, the way that, that I read this is it allows us to conduct our business in the most expedient way possible. It reduces the overall burden on staff, and when they have to be here, we're, we're here very late. Obviously, I know, I, I do appreciate, you know, having to miss dinner and family time. We do that every time we're here. I think we all do that. And we want to be, we want to be able to do the people's work and focus on that work as much as possible. So to me, it is, it is a matter of efficiency as well as just really clarifying that this, these meetings, as much as I would like to, I would love to have that dialogue. And I, there are opportunities for us to do that in different formats, but in a, in a council meeting where, where the majority, or sorry, yeah, I think that's right, the majority of the, of the body is present, the dialogue is not possible, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Juan, Councilmember Ania, do you have anything to add?
Just a couple words. The, as I understand it, we don't have a lot of people on Zoom. Isn't it like under 20 per meeting? So that word "lot" gets used a lot. But one of the things that I've been bothered by, and I'm sure other people have, as for the last two years sitting in the audience, we get some people sometimes that use words that are not acceptable. And cities have already dropped it for doing that. Plus, we care about our children. I've been out here when they're getting awards and the next item, not everybody leaves right after they get their awards. Some parents stay. And whatever item came up next, we have people on Zoom that are saying this is this, this is this, this is this. That's unacceptable language. And they get away with it because it's on Zoom, and they're gone. And that's why cities get away with that, get, do away with it. It hasn't come to that yet here, but I agree, 85% of the population voted. That means that people know what's going on in our town. And when I was campaigning and going door to door, people knew what was happening. People were aware of it. I didn't ask if they watch on Zoom, but they knew what was going on. And there's ways to reach us. I have my phone number listed. I get calls from people. Mostly it's about streetlights and potholes and things like that, but I get calls from people. That's what they care about. They care about their living here in the parks. But, you know, when I was a councilman for, for two terms, we never had Zoom because it wasn't there yet, because that's prior to the pandemic. But people watched the meeting the next day. And some people did call me about things. And usually, we didn't decide that night on most stuff. We have a couple of meetings. So I, I think it's easy to make a phone call or to, to email us, to tell us about that, what's coming up. You know, it's just something, it's just something that we want to provide, that at least I'm interested in efficiency, and I consider it efficiency, and I don't think it's a step backwards. Because like I said, some cities with the language, it's gone, and no one protests that. Because that's not acceptable in our community. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I just want to add a couple of additional points. Again, I, I myself have been the subject of foul language, people calling in from Zoom, and it was not appreciated. When we brought this up in November 2023, I didn't want to feel like an isolated incident or two was the reason that I was limiting access on Zoom. But we're, we're not limiting access, right? You're still going to be able to watch the meeting. And to the discussion about budget and audit committee meetings, other than those two, they're always recorded. I think maybe Mr. Miller, who's not here any longer, asked about that. Those meetings are all recorded. So I guess at this time, I'd like to hear if we have a motion, if there's no other comments.
I would move approval.
Second.
Can we call the roll? Thank you.
Thank you. On that motion, Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Thank you. You have four ayes with one no.
Okay, thank you. And that will close item 6A. We'll move on to item 6B, and thank you, everyone, for your comments. This is consider adoption of proposed updates to the city council guidelines and procedures. And again, I believe our city manager is going to kick us off here.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to address the proposed changes to city council guidelines and procedures. This is something that should be done annually or, or every other year at least to update and, and keep current. In your packet, I hope you had a chance to look at the redline version and a clean version copy of some of the proposed changes. Not sure if you'd like me to go through those one by one. It would take a little while, but I will do what you would like.
I would assume that we've all read the track changes that are in our council guidelines, and so I think that's sufficient.
And I'll turn it back over to you for discussion.
Okay, thank you. So does anyone have any questions about any of the proposed changes to the council guidelines?
Yes, I do, if no one else wants to go first. Let me probably easier to use my wide red mind here. For the sections where we've changed how agenda items get on the agenda, can you tell me a little bit about how you perceive that change? And that can go to the mayor or the vice mayor, since it looks like.
I'm sorry, which change are you referring to?
How items get on the agenda.
Oh, how items get on the agenda. Yep, we, I can easily address that. So we are asking that all future agenda item requests would be in writing to myself and to the city manager. And we would review those either in our one-on-one meetings or our agenda-setting meetings and determine priorities and determine if we have the staff resources and the ability to add things to the agenda in the future based on, again, urgency and priorities and staff resources. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
Okay. And how is that different than what was currently on there, other than putting it in writing?
Actually, in, may I? The, this is not a substantive change to the prior guidelines. I think it cleans up language. But in the prior guidelines, the requirement to be in writing was, was existent already. So I would say that this is more of a cleanup rather than anything substantive than what currently exists.
So previously, we asked for the, the agenda items here during council meetings, so that's excluded from the agenda list. So that's a change. And then the mayor and the city manager would confer, just as the mayor just now described, and figure out priority, urgency, et cetera, staff resources, and when it can come on a future agenda. It now currently reads that it will be whether or not it will be on there. That's different, because the mayor is then choosing whether or not to put it on the agenda. That's different. So that's, I'm trying to understand why we were going that route.
And in my view, it's, it's effectively the same thing. The language that, that's reflected in the current guidelines, I'm trying to figure out what the right word, is not mandate. It, it calls for the request to be in writing already, so that's not new. And without a request in writing, then, you know, even if we requested at council, then the, the guidelines would say that nothing can move forward. And then whether, the, the language of whether versus which, they are different words, but effectively, it is the same. Like, it operates in the same fashion. So like I said, in my view, I think it's a cleanup of language and not a substantive change.
So then would you be opposed to keeping the word "which" and not "whether"?
Well, I think that the reason we're not keeping the word "which," and we've changed it to "whether," is because we want to make sure that we have the staff resources. Look, I've brought up agenda items myself many, many times, and they have never made it to the agenda, because it's not a priority or there's not the staff resources to accommodate those requests. And, you know, I, I just want to address one thing, too. I know that you have had a repeated agenda request for more than a year now. And I've invited you to attend a meeting. I invited you last week to attend a meeting with us to discuss it, because I do want to learn more about that. I haven't heard from you. I hope that I will, so we can get that meeting scheduled. But as far as other future agenda items, we have to see. Look, we know that we're a small staff with limited resources. We do need more staffing. We're going to be talking about that at the budget and audit committee meeting and then the council meeting after that. But everybody's agenda request may not make it on the agenda. Does that answer that?
A little bit. How will the other council members know what has been requested?
I don't know if they will. And, and is that important to know what the other council members are requesting? Are you worried about duplicity?
A little bit about duplicity and transparency and, and understanding something that might have been punted or denied. I think it's important so that all of us understand what the other concerns are of other council members. So if it's only going to the mayor privately, and the city manager, it's still private, though. The rest of the body doesn't know what the others have asked for and requested. And, and there's no light of day for us to know what that is. So I'm, it's not clear to me why, why we would move to not verbalizing that for all of us.
And again, my goal is to, again, be efficient and bring back as much as I possibly can to the agenda this year. But we are going to be limited in what we are, we've got a lot of work ahead of us this year. And I do want to address your issue with you directly, because I know you've been requesting it for a long time. And I hope you will respond to me on that meeting. But I think you're going to have to believe that the city manager and I are going to make the right decision about.
It's not a distrust that you're not going to make the right decision, because it's always been the mayor and the city manager, actually, me back up. Years ago, there was a complaint that things were happening in private, and then people would just tell the mayor, please put this on the agenda. And it seemed like people complained, residents complained, council members complained, current council members complained, before they were council members, that there was this backdoor dealings happening, and there was nothing happening transparent. And now we're doing it transparently, and we're going backwards in being transparent to the community and us on what each, each of us are asking for. And it's always been, there was a running list that Raina had as our city manager of what the requests were with the help of the city clerk. She kept a log of what we were all asking for, and then we revisited a few months later to say, is it still necessary or not? That stopped because we had some staff turnover. But at least it was clear, hey, let's revisit this and figure out. It's been, it's been lingering for, lingering for six months. Is it still a priority for you guys? And then some of those came off and some of them stayed. But at least we all knew and it was clear what we were doing. This seems a little, well, it's, it's back to behind closed doors, and I just don't know why we would move to that. I understand that you set the agenda, and it's going to be based on priority and resources. That doesn't change. That's always been that way. I'm questioning taking it off the agenda where we can ask for it aloud. And I'm, I'm going to disagree that "which" and "whether" mean the same thing. They do not. And so I would ask that we keep it "which" with the same, I don't know why we're changing what we were already doing, I guess is what I'm saying. Other than putting it in writing.
Yeah, I think there's probably a good call out here that, you know, I would look to staff and say that there, because staff will continue to maintain a list of requests. And so I think I would ask staff to propose a way that these items that are requested could be viewed or somehow available for both us as council members and the public. So I, I think that's a fair ask to say what it is. I don't know what the best way to operationalize that is. And I'll, I think I would kick that over to you and have you let us know what you think is best in that regard. If that's, is that a fair ask?
It is. We can, we can accomplish that.
Okay. Anybody?
I was just going to say, having a list would be great, but I still do think that. How will the public see that? Are we going to post it? I don't think it should, I just, I just think that we need to be transparent to the public.
Well, and I think maybe, Chris, I'll defer to you, that you would report back on pending agenda items.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot that can go in your staff, in staff reports, so there's a lot that can go. I mean, I, I don't want to solve that for you at this point.
Because we have a weekly city manager report. He can report to that, that to us.
I'm talking about for the community. I just, I'm trying to understand the processes of what we're trying to do. I know that there is a meeting that happens with the mayor and the vice mayor and city staff to set the agenda. And I'm only asking, how are we and the community, not just us in our weekly report, going to understand what the S have been or why something's been denied? That's the other piece that I'm missing and had a question on. If it's not going to move forward, what is the process for notifying us about that? Okay.
And I think there's a, there's a consistent through line here, and that's like things that occur at our meeting that are not really meant for discussion. They're essentially just, for us. Where those things in the interest of efficiency are essentially, you know, trying to move to outside of this discussion format where we actually can't discuss them into a written format where it's available to be published, the public can see it. And it makes it a lot more clear, because when we say things off the cuff, sometimes I think it may not be as polished. But when you have the opportunity to write it down, it becomes a lot more clear for everyone to understand what's, what the intent is. So to me, again, this is more of an efficiency play. And, you know, and I would look to staff to, to determine the best way to make sure that information's available.
Can you, you lost me a little bit there. Can you clarify what you were just talking about?
Which part?
The off-the-cuff part. I'm, you've lost me. Do you mean council member requests, putting them in writing makes it more clear and efficient? Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And I just want to be clear, I did put my request in writing to the mayor last March. So I've done both. I've asked for them during the council meetings, and I also put it in writing to the mayor. The only reason how I, how come I haven't responded yet is I need to talk to our city attorney, because I had a brownie on that. That, that means you're Brown Act council member. I had a brownie on that, a brownie. A Brown Act council member that I discuss things with. We all have those, so that you don't violate the Brown Act. I spoke to him about, it's okay. Mala does. I spoke to him about it, and then I also alerted the mayor and then copied the city manager and Mala. So your request to me to discuss it, I want to be sure that I'm not violating that anymore outside of that realm. So that's the only reason how come I have not responded yet.
Is that person still on the council, that brownie?
No.
Okay. No, thank you. Councilmember Ania?
I just wanted to, to go over, but I agree with Councilmember Tillman on knowing for the council to start, or however which way you do it, to know what they are requesting, because I may be thinking the same thing, or I may be interested in talking about that issue so that I can let the city manager know, you know, I'm interested in that, too. That way, that way, while you're deciding, you'll see you have at least two members that are interested in that. So maybe just to us, because I don't think there's going to be 50. There's not going to be that many. And we had it that way where I used to be a council member, so we all knew. In fact, up there, the city manager emailed each council member individually that so-and-so talked to me about putting this on the agenda, but I don't need that. I don't, just the one email can go out. Just, just to let us know. I know you're busy, but I don't think there'll be that many. Thank you.
Yeah, we can make sure of that.
Councilmember Diaz, anything else to add? No, okay. If nothing else, then I will open it up to public comment, and I have one card here. Lauren Kendorf, you have three minutes. Lauren Kindorf, you have three minutes.
There is so much to cover in the changes that have been proposed. It's sort of mind-boggling and I should have written, you know, but which and whether. The, the procedure currently is to pronounce this at a council meeting or to write it in writing to mayor and what city manager. I don't see why these can't be brought up at a council meeting because then you're including us. I mean, the council is, is for the people. And if this all is secret and very private, the people don't know and we need to know. So, so, and then it says it is the mayor's discretion as to which scheduled meeting the agenda item will appear. It doesn't say the mayor can ignore an agenda request. It says on which scheduled meeting. So that is the discretion of the mayor. I've been to plenty of meetings where we've had extra time, very short agenda items that, that the repeated requests could have been discussed. And it's just disgusting. You can vote to ignore it, but it's, it's putting it on the agenda. Now, the change is whether, whether means you can choose whether or not to address it. And that's even more scary with the only putting it in writing to mayor because, and hopefully we will have an avenue, but whether is totally different than which. I'm not, it's not a word. It's not a word swap. It's totally different. So the fact that Holly's item hasn't been addressed and put at a regularly scheduled meeting is completely mind-boggling. After I went through the council procedure, I swear I spent hours doing that since Friday So it's, it's, and it sort of makes it very autocratic if just the mayor has the discretion rather than it coming out, it being public, we can speak, you know. It's, like I said, this is mind-boggling. Council reports, those are a great way to share what has been done, what people are involved in, what's happening in the wider area in our community, why we're cutting that off from public or writing it so we have to click another place. Like I said, this, there, there's so much on tonight's that I'm hoping we can address details and include public more because there is so much within that that people don't realize. And it's sort of scary to think how subversive this feels.
Thank you, Ms. Kindorf.
Okay. I'll start off by telling a little story that might surprise, actually probably the majority of the people in this room. So I moved to, Scott and I moved to Clayton late 2017. We started, I started attending the council member meetings late 2018. I started watching by video. And even though everyone in the world thinks that I absolutely hate Jeff Wan, he almost got my vote. And he almost got my vote because he came to meetings, meeting after meeting, and they filled this room suggesting this council's not listening to us. And I watched the videos and in a lot of cases, the council wasn't listening. The council came across as arrogant. Public comment came up over and over, people pleading to be listened to, and it was ignored. And it was ignored and ignored. And me as a new resident, I watched those meetings and I said, gosh, this guy, Jeff Wan, I kind of hope he wins because he's making a really good point. No one's listening. You said, Holly, you said it's not about trust. I don't, it's not about, I don't trust you. I will say, there are three of you on this council, I don't trust you. And I am not the only one. I have watched over the last couple of years, resident after resident get up and raise valid points that are not being listened to. I have watched a council member who just got reelected with the second most votes have their request continue to be ignored and continue to be ignored. Back in that 2018, when I used to watch those council meetings and I heard Jeff say, all of this stuff is happening behind closed doors and there's a lack of transparency. That's what I'm feeling from you three. The encouragement of, Holly, we will address your concern and we will do it behind closed This is not the way to bring the community together. It has to start with you guys. If you can't trust, we will trust you after you start trusting each other. And right now, right now, there are three of you that myself and lots of others do not trust right now. So you, if this whether versus which is effectively the same, then don't change it. What's the point of changing it? What's the point of changing it? I want to have my voice heard. Three of you are not listening and I am not the only person in this community that feels that way.
Thank you, Ms. Denzil.
Oh, the on button, not the other one. Okay. Ah, thank you. I hope it still got what Teri was saying. The last item, you guys were very concerned with efficiency. This item, you guys are dismissing this as just a little word change. This seems like an awful lot of city council time to take up with a word change from which to whether. It doesn't seem efficient. If the words mean the same thing, why change them? Is it that big of a deal? And it, it seems like Holly, Holly has said several times that she keeps raising a request and it, it's starting to, and with Ms. Mayor, Ms. Kim, you keep saying we can discuss this in private. It seems like you're very concerned with not letting her issue be discussed in front of everybody. I, what, I don't know what it is, but what is Holly requesting that you're so afraid of discussing in public? I mean, this is a city council meeting. This is where the city comes together and issues that affect us as a city are decided. If one of you that got, you know, so many votes to represent us is raising an issue, why say, oh, no, that, I'm sorry, that doesn't merit? You're just a minority concern. That doesn't merit being discussed by all of us in light of the public. This is especially troubling in terms of transparency when you guys just voted to exclude people from participating that can't come to the meetings in, in person. I, I'm stunned. I've lived here since 2010. Or, sorry, 2012. How, how can you, really? This is really upsetting. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to, Mr. Hayden? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. The city council has a long history of transparency in the way it deals with our community. They're elected by our residents to represent the best interest of Clayton and make those decisions that benefit all of us. And even if they're not unanimous, they're the best issue resolution at that time based on that information. And that information is often obtained by input from our residents. And what I see tonight on these changes, and then some of them are pretty important changes, to longstanding guidelines that former councils have followed. I'm very concerned about the impact they're having because rather than continuing to reinforce and demonstrate open meetings that allow input from all of our residents who are concerned, we seem to be going the different direction and the opposite direction with what's proposed. And the three items that were really concerning were limiting public comment to 20 minutes or it would be deferred to the end of a meeting. Often you get interesting comments that weren't considered by the council from your residents who are dealing directly with many of these issues. And if it's an issue that's so important that people want to continue talking about that issue, you have an obligation to listen to the concerned citizens that took the time to come to meetings. And I think it's hypocritical and rude to tell them you're going to limit them because you feel your time is more important than to listen to the very residents that elected you to represent the best items of, the best issues for Clayton. So certainly limiting that discussion until the last of the meeting really breaks the chain of thought and the discussion that should have occurred all at the same time. The other item is the council reports. This is an important item that many councils enjoyed sharing with the public to reinforce what they do between meetings and to also demonstrate that there's quite a bit of activity that they're doing representing not only our interests internally within the city of Clayton, but also externally with our neighbors. And it reinforces what the council is elected to do and that's to represent Clayton to the best of their ability. And the last item is to bring forth items of interest at our council meetings. And those were purposely to be verbalized at the meetings so, again, residents would be aware of what the council was thinking and issues they wanted to deal with. And to hide those issues by requiring that they be written and potentially ignored is a disservice to the public. And it's a disservice to council members who were elected to represent the residents of Clayton to raise issues that they feel are important. So I really feel those three items should not be changed and you should go with what the council has done in the past and that's represent your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to, Mr. Denzil? Go ahead.
I'll get your cards, Stephanie. Sorry, this is impromptu. I'm sensing a common theme here. What are you guys afraid of? Seriously, Jim, Jeff, Kim, what are you afraid of? You are here to serve us. It is your responsibility to serve your community. We elected you to do so, not to serve the ones you'd like, but serve all of us. And for whatever reason, you are afraid of our voices being heard. Stop giving me that confused look, Jim. You've been doing it to Meredith all night, too. I know, but you only give that confused look when people are giving public comments. It's disgusting and it's demeaning and you're here to serve us, like I said. So be respectful. Thank you. Now, what are you afraid of? Are you afraid of Meredith spending time with her daughter? Are you afraid of Keith? Are you afraid of Jordan who comes here from the University of frickin' Arizona to spend time because she cares so much to be here? What are you afraid of? Freaking disgust me.
Thank you, Mr. Denzil. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak? Adam Clark, do we have anybody online?
Yes, I currently have two speakers online.
Okay.
Spots, your microphone is available.
Thank you. I guess this is one of the last opportunities to speak remotely to a meeting. I'm really disappointed in the initial decision. And with regard to the changes to how the city council meetings shall be run and what information should be disclosed at the meetings, I think you're making big mistakes. And to echo some of what Keith Hayden said so well, you're, you're not focusing on what your constituents are most interested in. You are focusing in what's more efficient for you as a council. And that is not the purpose of the city council meeting. Yes, you have business to conduct and yes, it's the business of the city of Clayton. But you cannot do so or should not do so because you certainly can. It's just wrong. You shouldn't do so at the expense of participation and transparency with your constituents. And I'm, I'm just really disappointed because this is the second discussion tonight and the second vote. I know this hasn't happened yet, but I know how it's going to go based on your comments. Your decisions have been made already. You're bringing, you're coming to the meetings without open minds to entertain all of the options being presented and the, the arguments being made by your constituents for things that are important to them. You're just blocking those out and voting as you please. And that doesn't seem to be a representative government. So I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have someone else online?
Brooke Halliday, your microphone is available. Final call for Brooke Halliday, your microphone is available?
Hear me? Hear me? Yes. Okay, hi. My name is Brooke Halliday. I wasn't planning to speak, but I'm pretty disgusted by all of this that has been spoken of so far. I'd just like to ask why four out of five of you have chosen so-called efficiency over inclusion of the public in this agenda and the last. You all, as the council, serve the people and in this topic and the last in the agenda, it is clear that all you want to go back to how it was. Take it from a 20-year-old in this community, there's a reason that many of those in my generation don't phone into these meetings very often. And that is because none of you seem to care about how we feel. We make up your minds ahead of time. You talk of efficiency and at this rate, I wouldn't be surprised if you just terminate all public comment at all, in person and not. Every single public comment made at this meeting today have been in disagreement with four out of five of you. But it seems you've already made up your minds. You preach that we mean more efficiency, yet you ignore one of your most pivotal council members, Holly Tillman. To the last agenda item, four of you have just removed my personal ability to listen in and share my thoughts on these meetings as I am a university student in Southern California. It is troubling that four of you can make a decision that most of the people who have spoken today blatantly disagree with. It's a power trip. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have another speaker? Matt Tillman, your microphone is available.
So I think it's very clear that the decisions that are being made tonight are for the interest of four people that are sitting on the council. It's very unfortunate to the other 12,000 residents in the city that this happens to be the decisions that are being made. I implore the residents of the city to understand that the decisions that they've made about the people that they elect result in the decisions that are being made tonight. It is very unfortunate that there is a tremendous lack of transparency that is now happening within the city council and the residents of this city. The four council members that are there, you're certainly going to do whatever you choose to do. That is not in the interest of the constituents that you have discussed these items with. There's a definitely a minority of individuals that feel a certain way and you are going to side with it. But when you have other residents in the city that have a differing opinion, you are never going to side with it. And there is no way that you can sit here and tell me that there is never a discussion prior to these meetings amongst the four of you about what's the decisions that are going to be made tonight. Because I can assure you, the majority of the decisions that will be made will be voted on on four to one. And that one individual is the one that is actually making a decision based on what is being heard by the residents of this city. It may not be all, but many of them are actually agreeing with the minority decision that is being made. So there's nothing that can be done because obviously you have the majority vote. But I can assure you that the residents of this city are not pleased with those decisions that are being made. And hopefully at some point, and maybe it's not until it's time for another election, when you want to actually consider what people are saying, that you will actually take that into account. But until now, there is absolutely no consideration for the residents of this city. And it's definitely a shame. And all of you should be ashamed for this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online?
There are no other speakers online.
Okay.
There are no other speakers online.
Mr. Horton, please.
Okay, so I've been listening all evening, and the conclusion that I continue returning to is that we had city councils in the past who also had a majority of people here, and they didn't listen to them, and they passed what they wanted because they were a majority. And when the people of Clayton didn't like the way it was going, they voted in a different council, which is what has happened here. And yes, there are many who don't like what the majority of the council is doing, but I will tell you, I trust you, I support you, I voted for each one of you, and I did so because I didn't like the way Clayton was going. I didn't like the first time ever seeing our cities' businesses boarded up because of the threat of Black Lives Matter coming through town, or because of the threat of other things that they've done in other cities. I didn't like that they were building a huge three-story building downtown, where they didn't, they basically accommodated to the best of their ability so that he didn't have to have reports, he didn't have to get inspections, he didn't have to have adequate parking, all these different things, and they just ignored the people. So the bottom line is, when we have a council in there who is no longer trusted, who isn't representing the people, like you say, maybe that's the case, vote them out. That's what we did, and that's what I expect. One day will happen if Clayton gets tired of going back this way. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this? Anyone else online?
There are no speakers online.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. Are there any additional comments on this item?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, what exactly is it that we are keeping or changing? Because there were some things that Councilmember Aneah agreed with me on. I just, where are we at right now?
Go ahead.
I agree with you that on council members that request something added to the agenda that the city manager let all of us know, because there may be other council members that agree that that should be put on the agenda. That's what I agree with.
And I think the city manager has already agreed to report out to the rest of us on that. Anybody else?
I would just like to reiterate, I mean, I think it does seem like this is an issue that's important to folks. However, generally, the guidelines do get revisited from time to time, and this is a fairly normal process. The changes that are reflected here are, I don't really think that they're substantive changes. A lot of language cleanup, order of operations, that type of thing. I think one comment was about the 20-minute limit as well. That's not a change. That's existing in the current guidelines as well. And really, to the extent that what these are is a way that we try to conduct ourselves, they are truly just guidelines in that they're not controlling, essentially. They're guidelines, and they speak to how we want to comport. And to me, this is fairly routine. And the changes here, like I said, the through line that I see is about efficiency and essentially non-discussion items that aren't really up for us talking with each other about, because this is, these meetings are primarily to do the city's business, not to pontificate on any random subject. So to the extent that there are things that are not calling for discussion, those things are being moved to writing so that everyone can read them, they're very clear, they're in the record, transparency is still there so that it's easier to read than it would be to watch extensive videos to see what people want to say, and that's about it. So it seems pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. Comes from Aneah.
Again, these, and I concur with the definition, they're guidelines, and that's what they are. And from time to time, they do need to be reviewed and brought up to date, and I think this is a step in that direction. The other thing is that documents what we're doing. You know, if we're out meeting with a variety of other organizations like we just had over the past few weeks, it's now documented by that individual. So I don't, I'm not opposed to that, and I think it's going to be a much more efficient end-of-the-meeting portion that limits the discussion and keeps it on point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tillman?
Sure, yep. I just want to remind everyone that these, the guidelines that are redlined through were written by the mayor two years ago, May of 2023. And I know even at that point, there were some concerns that Councilmember Clovan at the time and I had on some of the changes that were made. Prior to that, there were changes that were made to the order of the agenda items. I know that we had moved the public comment portion up to the beginning because we wanted to make sure that families could participate, et cetera, because they used to be at the very end, and then that finally got changed. Now we're going to make sure that there aren't, well, the agenda order, I'm concerned on the, we also took away the committee reports. There used to be committees that would report out. That was also at the top of the agenda when the city manager would report. Where are the residents' voices, the people who are sitting on committees? I want to make sure that that isn't lost in here, because we have made quite a few That's just, it's missing. You've got city manager reports, you've got no council members reporting out, it's all in writing, and I'm just wondering, why are we trying to, to me, it seems like we're trying to silence the community, and I don't want it to feel that way, and we're hearing from people that it does. It was clear that there was a goal to silence what you consider just extra words that are being said, but there's a purpose, and I've been pretty crystal clear on why I was asking for those at the end of meetings, but it'll end up coming out sooner or later. I think that we need to be very careful in that this doesn't go down the road of trying to keep people who are in chambers from being able to speak. I'm going to say that I hope I didn't just hear what I heard after that speaker spoke, but I thought I heard something from one of the council members that said, well, you won't have to listen to that very long. Like, there's something else that's coming, and I think that we owe it to these residents to be clear on what the real agenda here is, besides efficiency.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the concerns that they all, I concur with everybody who spoke tonight and shared what their concerns were.
Thank you. Councilmember Tillman? Councilmember Aneah?
Yes, you know, I've listened to everyone, and there's a lot of people here that have spoken about how they feel, but I represent the entire city. And people, just because they're not here tonight, doesn't mean that they oppose or are for it. But I represent the entire city, and I've talked to a lot of people recently when I was running. They want some changes, not necessarily this. These changes in here, we've had where I was a council member. There's nothing new in here. And a lot of people didn't want to hear us report out on different committees that we're on, or what we did last Sunday, or whatever. You put that in the record, and it's there, because it's not there otherwise. You just put that in the record, and you can read it. And if it's something that's really coming up, that's outstanding, if the state is trying to vote on something that they want our input, and I happen to be on that committee if I am, I would bring that right to the city manager to put on the agenda so that the whole community can listen to it. I mean, a lot of people still don't know that the governor just signed a bill, or not a bill, but he ordered, he wants more restrictions on housing element. He wants cities to do more, or he's going to withhold our money. I don't know how many people know that. It's coming. He's already written it. He's already announced it. And so there are things that'll be there. On these things for the agendas, they're fine. And the one thing that I was, I told Councilmember Tillman that I agree with is I'd like to know what other council members want to have put on the agenda. Some items you can't put on the agenda because there's legal issues. I always go back to my police days of 30 years. Sometimes you can't talk about them in public till you get it cleared through the attorneys, or you have to go through proper procedures. But the regular public doesn't understand that. Why can't you put that on the agenda? They want that on the agenda, no matter what it is. Sometimes you cannot do that. That's why we have an attorney that has to go back and check it. And I'm just talking about any agenda item. That's why the mayors go back with the city manager. I did that when I was mayor. And in fact, we had two city attorneys. They both came because we had a lot of different items to do. And so that's what you do it, because as a mayor, I was a council member, I was a citizen. I don't know what the attorneys do. They know the rules. And so that's why it has to go through the city manager and probably the city attorney also, because they're at that meeting. So don't think that it's, everything is being swept under the carpet, because it's not. But let me tell you, it has been in prior council meetings, and I'm not talking recently. I've been retired 20 years from here, and in the years that I spent at the police department, those councils barely talked to the public. They did things behind closed door. And that's not going to happen as long as I'm here. This is my second meeting, and I'm already being accused of meeting with three other council members and violating the Brown Act. That's not me. And when people start accusing you of doing things like that, then you can just tell they have no idea what's going on in this city. They can call me and ask me. I have no reason to call any council member if I don't want to. I'm an independent. That's how I see myself. Sometimes I'm going to vote the way I vote, and that's just the way it's going to be. But I was elected to make some changes, to see what I could do about that. And if you want to use the word "go back," you can, but I have history on councils and cities. And so I intend to do that, and I intend to vote for the best way that I see to go at that particular time. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. And I think we're all independent thinkers, and we are certainly, the beauty of it is that we're able to express our opinion here to all of you tonight. And again, I just want to address one thing. I do want to meet with you, Councilmember Tillman, so I can learn and understand what that proposed agenda item is. I don't have clarity, I don't have details, I don't understand the true picture, and so that is why I called for that meeting, and I hope we'll have that shortly. And this is not about being less transparent. The council reports to me, and I know we brought this up at a previous meeting a few years ago, have become almost onerous, where you are literally just reading off of a post-it note or a list, and so we're going to put them in writing for you so you can see exactly what we've done. And when we've done it, and we are going to get to committee assignments next, I think committee reports are a great idea. I think we kind of informally report out, but we can certainly make that more of a standard. And I have asked about a legislative agenda, because I know there are a lot of things coming from either Legacal Cities or the state, and I think that could be something else we could add to the agenda. But this isn't about being less transparent. And so at this time, I am going to call for a motion on item 6B.
Can I have one comment?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I think in what you were mentioning about committee reports could easily slot in under the item seven reports, and to the extent that there would be a committee report, then it can go there.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, I would move approval of the changes as indicated in the report with that small clarification.
With the city man, thank you. Let's take a poll.
And just to be clear, that language is already in there, you're just clarifying. Okay. So on that motion, Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
No.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano?
Yes.
Thank you, you have four ayes with one no.
Thank you. Okay, and then we'll move on to our last action item this evening, which is to discuss and approve city council committees and assignments. And I think I'm kicking this one off, right? So thank you all for sending me your requests, and I'm kind of going to go through these committees one at a time, and then we'll have public comment, and then we'll come back and discuss. I tried to accommodate everyone's request as best as I could, and if, you know, we'll discuss, there's also some committees that we think need to wait for a later date for discussion. So I think I'm going to just go through these committees one at a time and let you know. So the first one is ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments. And Councilmember Tillman, I'd like you to serve as our primary representative on ABAG. And Councilmember Diaz, I have you as an alternate. Budget and Audit, I'd like to continue the work that Vice Mayor Juan and I have been doing, so I've got both of us serving on that committee and no alternate.
Point of order, Mayor, do we have this in writing?
I have it in writing. How are we?
I don't, I'm just writing down what you're telling me, because I don't see it.
Well, we're going to have it in writing after the meeting, right? Did we need it in writing before?
No, because we didn't have this with enough notice.
Okay. So do you want to discuss the committees one at a time, or wait till I get through the list?
Why don't you go ahead and do the list, and I'll just keep jotting down.
Okay, okay. Keep jotting down. Budget and Audit, Vice Mayor Juan and myself, Citizens Corp., that's CERT, I've got Councilmember Diaz and myself as an alternate. City-sponsored special events, I have Councilmember Diaz and myself serving on that. The Clayton Financing Authority, the CFA, I think we need more clarity on that, correct? And we're going to come back at a future meeting to discuss that committee. Community Parks, Sports Field Committee, I've got Vice Mayor Juan and Councilmember Aneah on that. They both have a desire to help our community parks. CCWD, our Contra Costa Water District, I've got Councilmember Diaz on that, and Councilmember Aneah as a backup. CCCTA, County Connection, I've got Councilmember Diaz on that, and Councilmember Tillman as a backup. Do the Right Thing, I've got Council, I'm laughing because I know this is, it can be a lot of work, but it's one of our most cherished projects. I've got Councilmember Tillman leading that, and I'd like to help you with that as a backup. And I wanted to uncouple the Do the Right Thing and Unsung Hero. I'd like the Unsung Hero Committee, which was part of Do the Right Thing, to be separate, and I'd like us all to contribute to, I think we all know unsung heroes in our community. I discussed this earlier with our city manager, and we thought it might be nice to honor an unsung hero each month, and maybe have a little pizza party for all of the unsung heroes at the end of the year. And so I'd like us all to be thinking about the heroes in our community. East Bay Division, Legacal Cities, I've got Councilmember Aneah and Councilmember Diaz as a backup. The East Contra Costa Habitat Conservancy, I would like to continue on that committee, and I've got Council, Vice Mayor Juan as a backup for me on that. Garbage and Recycling, we're going to remove that committee. We just signed a 10-year agreement with Republic Services. And then we've got the interview committees for the Planning Commission. We know we have an open seat on our Planning Commission. an open seat on our Planning Commission, and we do need to address that at a future meeting, but that's an entire council. Same with Interview Committee for TLC, our Trails and Landscaping Committee, that's entire council. Almost done. Clayton Library Foundation, I'd like to remain on that committee. We have a library refresh this year, and I've been involved in that library refresh discussion for several years. I'd like Councilmember Tillman to be my alternate on that. Mayor's Conference is all of us. In fact, we will be hosting the Mayor's Conference here in the city of Clayton in April. So, more to come on that. Mount Diablo Unified School District Liaison, I've got two folks. I think we've always had two. I've got Councilmember Tillman and Councilmember Aneah on that. And I just want to state that last year, former Mayor Diaz, we were talking in our agenda-setting meetings about getting the school district back to a meeting schedule with us. I know we reached out to them, but our city manager is going to make sure he reaches out to the superintendent and at least have meetings twice a year, if not quarterly. The next committee is the Okurs Geological Hazard Abatement District, or the GAD. We can't determine those appointments today, which is, because we are the governing board, we have to have a GAD meeting to do that, and we'll do that at a future meeting. TLC, or again, our Trails and Landscaping Liaison, I'd like to keep Councilmember Tillman on that, and add Councilmember Juan, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Juan, to that, and have them co-chair that committee with no alternate. And I know that there is a lot of work to be done on TLC this year. Transpac, I've got Councilmember Aneah and Councilmember Tillman as a backup. The Internship and Training Program, it's really as needed. We've, have not implemented that. And then, the one that was missing from our list, I just want to bring up, is the Parking Permit Committee. It was Councilmember Tillman and Vice Mayor Juan, and I'd like to keep it that way for the time being, unless anybody has a change of heart on that. And again, I tried to make sure that there was an even balance of primary and alternate seating, and that I fulfilled as many of your requests as possible. So, any questions for me? Any discussion? Before I open it up for public comment? Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one. When are the ABAG meetings?
They are, so Stephanie and I both looked online. There's an annual meeting for sure in San Francisco, and then I think there's a number of other committees that are regional.
That are held more often, quarterly, monthly?
That I think are held more often. I looked again today. The January meeting was canceled, but I think there's one in February. And it's the, God, don't quote me on this, but I think it was the Bay Area Regional Committee. It's kind of a subcommittee of ABAG. But that's an important one, and we do need a presence on that. Any other questions? What are any of the committee assignments? Okay. If not, I'll open this up to public comment. And I have one card from Lauren Kendorf. Ms. Kendorf? Hello again.
I just had a question. I went to a meeting of the Financial Sustainability Committee that I found very interesting. They really gathered a lot of information from our city engineer, and there was certainly a lot to process there, and I was glad to think these people would be doing that. I didn't see them on the list of committees. I'm not sure how those, how that comes about. I mean, and it certainly would not be a council member participating, but it, you know, if everybody has a contact person, I'm just wondering what is going on with that committee.
Thank you. And the city manager and I did talk about that today. In fact, two of our members of the committee are here with us this evening. It's a volunteer committee, so it's not a council assignment. There's not a liaison to that. And I imagine that committee will be meeting again shortly in 2025. Is there anyone online, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers to this side.
No speakers online. Okay. Do I have a motion to?
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Thank you. On that motion, Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Thank you very much. And again, I like the idea of the committees reporting out. Well, let's flush that out a little bit more at a future meeting. And if no other discussion, I'm going to close Items 6 and move on to 7, which is our city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick things. First of all, Happy New Year to everybody, and thank you for coming to the meeting this evening and participating. As the mayor mentioned, we do have one seat vacant on the Planning Commission. There's information on the website currently, and there will be some social media blasts going out shortly for that seat, so that the council can fill it. Reminder, Budget and Audit Committee is Monday, January 13, 4:00 p.m., right here. We've had a change in our community development staff. We are using a new contractor, CSG is our new contract for those services, and our new person just started Monday. His name is Farhad Mortazavi. And we are off to a great start with Farad, so we're looking forward to making some vast improvements in that area. And finally, if you'll indulge me a couple of minutes, we tried to introduce our interim police chief in December, and we had some technical issues, so he was not able to communicate on his end. So, I would like to offer the floor to Chief Don Mort, who is our interim police chief.
There's a button there. Yeah, there you go. There you go.
It's very simple, the one that says on/off. I will figure that out eventually. But again, I'm not going to take a lot of time. I did want to make appearance here tonight, let you know who I am, see my face. I'm very distinguishable, I guess, but it's a pleasure being here. I look forward to meeting with each one of you, one-on-one. I've already learned a lot in five days, seems like 70, but that's a different story. No, it's, you know, bottom line, what I'm learning is you've got a good department. You've got good people, you know? There's, like any other department, there's little things that can be tweaked, improved upon, and I will be making recommendations, and I will be talking to the city manager, and hopefully preparing a good assessment for your incoming chief, whoever that he or she person may be. But anytime you have questions, feel free to call me. I'll be more than happy to answer your questions, and same thing with the community. If you've got issues or concerns, let me know. Can't solve it all, but thank you for having me, and I look forward to four to six months with you, whatever it is. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Chief Mort. We're delighted to have him. He's being shy, but he comes to us with a wealth of experience in many municipalities, so thank you. We're delighted that you're here. City manager, was there anything else?
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. And that concludes Item 7. Item 8 is Public Hearings, There Are None. Council Item Request and Directive for Future Meetings, I guess we'll include this one more time right now in public. Anyone?
It's my last one. I might as well. My same request. And I think that I will just say to this body that what I am requesting doesn't cost a penny. I know that there have been people in the public, doesn't cost a penny to discuss. The discussion is for the council to decide whether or not to hire an independent third-party investigator to figure out why staff, there's been so much staff turnover. And I've said since October 2023, the reasons why at subsequent meetings after that. And each time, I've given a little bit more clarity on why. We have had staff who have written to us and told us they felt harassed, and they felt that it was a toxic and hostile work environment, and I wanted us to get to the bottom of that. That is the, that's the reason why. That's the foundation behind it. Our city man, I mean, our city attorney expressed that she is not allowed to go out, and if she knows that there's something that happened, she cannot hire a third-party investigator without council approval to do that. So, it takes for us to discuss that together, to direct her to do that. That's why we need to have that come back to us. I put it in writing to Mayor Diaz last March and gave more details. I'm happy to forward that to you, excuse me, if Mala says that that's fine, to forward that email to you. And then, I'm happy to sit down and discuss later this month as well, because I do think it's very important, and we owe it to our staff to ensure that we have stability on the third floor. We owe it to our residents, we owe it to the staff, we owe it to ourselves. Thank you.
I wanted to say something about that. This is the first I've heard about harassment from whoever that's in the city. But, you know, before you hire an investigator, you have to have, you have to have a complainant. So, whatever former staff member wants to put it in writing, the first step is, it goes to Human Resources. They investigate it on their end. And if they decide that there's, needs to be more action taken, then it comes to us, and then we decide what further action we want to take. So, in my second meeting, I haven't seen anything in writing of a formal complaint that we could give to HR. Council is last on these things. That's why we have a human resource. Every city does. Most businesses do. And that's where it goes first, if it's a complaint. It doesn't go right to the council to hire someone and spend our taxpayer money when we have to go through our steps. Why have a human service person working for us if they don't get it first? That's where it goes. At least every place I've ever worked, that's where it went. And so, that's, I think we need to do it by steps. And the first step is a letter of complaint from a former employee or whoever, and we start from there.
That started in October of 2023. You weren't on the council back then, sir.
No, did it go through HR?
It absolutely did.
Okay. All right. I didn't know that. Sorry. No, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Future agenda items? Well, I have two. While I have the opportunity, I do want to make sure we keep talking about the city flag. I think that's really important. And I do think it would be a good thing for us to have some good governance training. I know we've talked about that individually and collectively. And so, I've asked our city manager to maybe look into that, whether it's League of Cal Cities or a specific trainer, and get us some bids on that. And so, that will help us work well together, and with all of you, and certainly could not hurt. If there's nothing else, I'm going to close Item 9, and last chance for council reports, Item Number 10. And who wants to go first? Councilmember Tillman? Go ahead.
It's brief. It was the holidays, my babies were home, so I attended Chief McKeachan's Final Four World Lunch. That was great to be able to send him off, and I will miss him. And then, I attended the first, second, and seventh nights of the menorah lighting downtown, and I'm pleased that that has grown as it has, and that Claude and a couple of other residents actually put that into action. I spoke to residents regarding the landscape maintenance district, staff turnover, accessibility, and fire wise. And then, I also attended the historic swearing-in of the first female supervisor in District 5, my dear friend Chanelles Gales Preston, and that was last week. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Aneah?
Mine's brief also. I also attended the leaving of Chief McKeachan. He moved up to a bigger department and more money, and it's close to his home, only about 20 miles away now. So, I attended that. Went to the Christmas tree lighting, which was very nice. Let me think of where else. Not Christmas tree. Was it Christmas tree?
Menorah lighting.
Menorah lighting, but the other one. That was in the, it was a Christmas tree lighting too. The Christmas tree where Santa Claus came?
Oh, at the beginning of December. Okay.
That's what I meant, yeah. I did that, and I'm always talking to my constituents and residents. Have coffee with different peoples almost every day of the week. The, they're looking forward to productive Clayton this year, especially looking forward to concerts. They can't wait. They're asking me, who's going to play on this stage? Who's going, what kind of music is this going to be? I said, that's not me. I said, at the very least, at the very least, we'll have somebody with karaoke. They didn't like that very much. They didn't like that very much. But we have the money, and we're going to have good bands, I'm sure, and it'll work out. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
You want me to go first, or next? I thought Mr. Juan was going to jump in there for a second. Okay, on the 19th, had a County Connection Board meeting, and at that meeting, we dedicated the administration building in the name of the Schroeder family, longtime public servants in the Contra Costa area, and it was a wonderful event. Then, Christmas, and then for the next seven, eight days, I want to compliment, we have a very vibrant and active Jewish community out here. We had a number of events over at the Corral in honor and recognizing Hanukkah, and then a new entrance came in, and we had a festival on the 31st, and it was well-attended, and a lot of activities and so forth. And again, very vibrant and active Jewish community. Very pleased to see them out there in the events that they're doing. On the 4th, we took down the holiday decorations, put them away for another year, and today, meeting with the city manager, end of report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Juan?
Yeah, I had quite a few conversations around the agenda items that we discussed tonight. No spoilers, but the lineup of the bands is in flight, and it will be revealed in good time. So, karaoke's not on the list. And that, I did take time on the holidays to go on an extended family vacation, so that's the end of my report.
Well-deserved, I'm sure. And again, I will just say that I really appreciate our menorah lightings and our Hanukkah celebrations. I want to thank our city clerk Stephanie for coordinating with Rabbi Kesselmann from Chabad of Concord. He did a really fantastic job, and we had such a great turnout. And it was nice to see so many people come out in the community and celebrate with one another for the holidays. So, Happy New Year. Thank you. Our next meeting will be on January 21st, and of course, Budget Nodded on Monday here at 4:00. And then, our City Sponsored Special Events Committee is the last Monday of the month at 4:00, which will be in City Hall. So, thank you all. Have a nice evening. Appreciate it. Meeting adjourned.
9:09.
9:09.
9:09. Okay, here's a, I know.